Becky Bysel.
Here.
Brian Davis.
Here.
Lisa Haddin.
Here.
Scott Gergen, not present. Dave Pembell, not present. Stephanie Malm, here. And Kelsey Waits.
Here.
All right, so at this point, we will take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. Next up is an approval of the minutes from the August 25th regular school board meeting and the September 8th special meeting of the Hastings School Board. That was our closed session meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, at this point, I would like to just recognize our visitors. Everyone who's watching from home on HCTV and all of those who have come to the meeting in person today, thank you. And we will move on to announcements and recognitions.
All right. Tonight, I would like to recognize someone who's in the audience, someone who usually is with me at most of the meetings with all of you and the board and is a part of most all of our conversations, but really has a position that's behind the scenes and does a lot of things that people don't typically see on a daily basis. But this person literally keeps our operations running no matter what time of day. And again, literally, no matter what time of day. A lot of the reasons that we have been in a different place in other districts throughout COVID is because of her, is my thought. And I'm not sure how many people understand just how many of our day-to-day things Jen Subert does for our school district and ensures that the stuff gets taken care of with regard to our students in addition to school finances. She stays on top of transportation, food service programs. She plays a major role in coordinating and overseeing facilities, planning, and project coordination. She helps ensures any contracts we engage in are appropriate in the best interest of our district. She's part of our enrollment and our staffing planning as well as our bargaining group negotiations. With regard to COVID, she has organized our health, safety, our PPE implementation to include testing programs, additional transportation, and of course, meal programming. Pretty much anything that goes on in our district related to finance or operations is a part of Jen Subert's world, which means she is pretty much always on call. Her attention to detail and wanting to ensure things are done correctly to support people and students means she works a lot of hours. Jen has a constant focus of trying to do what is best to support the students and staff of Hastings. She does her job with integrity and professionalism. And she is constantly looking for ways to creatively get us the most out of our district dollars. For all these reasons and more, I just want to take this opportunity to publicly recognize Jen Subert for all she does for the district. She definitely creates multiple pockets of awesomeness for all of us. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And thank you for everything that you do, Jen. I saw your face as Bob started speaking.
It doesn't make sense, I knew it.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you for everything you do for the district and for our students. Items for discussion. We'll start with a second reading of some of our policies that we had done first readings of last month, beginning with policy 102, equal educational opportunity. So do we have any discussion on this policy? Okay, so seeing no discussion, since this is a second reading, we can move it to an action item for approval tonight. Is there any discussion on the motion to move to an action item? Okay. So all those in favor of moving policy 102 to an action item, say aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next policy up is policy 213, school board committees. And again, this was just keeping it in line with our practice, updating that with some of our committees, specifically community engagement, had not been on there previously. So is there any discussion on this adjusted policy?
I have the same question I had last month, and that's whether or not we would add legislative action at this time, or do the policy committee discuss it and choose to leave it for a future revision?
Yeah, we discussed, well, policy committee did not meet this month. We weren't able to, given, well, the policies we were going to review weren't quite ready for review yet. So there was no need to meet. However, the discussion from the previous meeting had been we would wait until January until we actually set it up as a committee at the organizational meeting.
And that makes sense to me, then process-wise, do we review this policy again? Is that procedurally how it happens?
Yeah, I think so, because it's not a policy right now. I mean, we could technically hold off on doing this until January.
I'm not asking that we do. I think it's fine. This is very reflective of what we're currently doing. I just, if we move this forward and approve it today, which I think is very likely, then we just revisit it.
Yeah, in January, I think we would end up revisiting it to add that legislative committee on there, too. I'm honestly not opposed to putting it on today either.
I can see the point, I mean, I can see both points, of waiting until January. Like, we have our org meeting beginning of the month, and we have a board meeting at the end of January, and maybe this comes up with whatever was decided. I don't want to lose track of it, I guess, is my point.
Yeah, and for this, I would actually ask Superintendent McDowell if that revision would be significant enough that it would have to go through two readings in order to approve?
I would say it would, because you're adding an official committee of the school board.
So we could add it today. We don't have that committee set up yet, and we wouldn't until the organizational meeting in January. Or we just put this on the agenda with the new meeting, or with the new committee in January. And then approve it in February.
Can we add it with a caveat of that's the date that it would actually happen? And just to keep, that way it definitely keeps us on the roll. Can we add it and then say effective January 1, or whether that first Tuesday in January is?
If you did it that way, with the approval of the policy now, you'd end up having to come back to the policy, because you wouldn't want that verbiage in that policy. But what we can do, I mean, if you want to approve it as is tonight and add it, we'll just have Becky put it in the notes on that running agenda that we have for policy, that for the December policy meeting, it comes up, we add it, and then this policy just shows up, like any other policy, that if legislatively there's a tweak that has to go back through, even if we just revised it, we'd throw this policy back on in January, like you were talking about, and add the legislative committee to it.
Okay, I just want to acknowledge it to make sure that Lisa's comfortable, so whether we do it then, however we have to set it up.
Yeah, I think if Becky takes note of it now, and then we can do a first reading in December, confirm that it actually is the will of the board sitting in January, and then approve it in January, that's fine.
Okay. I think that sounds like a plan. And so then with that, is there a motion to move this to an action item for tonight?
Some of. Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of moving this to an action item, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The next policy is policy 413, harassment and violence. Do we have any discussion on this policy? Right, seeing none, is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Next up is policy 521, student disability non-discrimination. Is there any discussion on this policy? Seeing none, is there a motion to move this to an action item?
Some of. Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is policy 522, student sex non-discrimination. Is there any discussion on this policy? Is there a motion to move this to an action item?
Some of.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. The last policy going through the second read is policy 522A, Title IX notification. Is there any discussion on this policy? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to move this to an action item?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we'll move into administrative reports, beginning with superintendent.
All right, thank you. So, just want to give some updates on the start of the school year. I guess all in all, we're having a good start to the school year. The people in the community, I think, have seen that on our local newspaper, Facebook page, KDWA's page, HCTV, we've got students out and about doing what they do in school, somewhat of a normal school year, as well as all of our athletics are definitely in full swing right now. And I would say, having been out in our buildings, for the most part, there's a back-to-normal-type feel going on in the buildings, albeit not back to exactly the way that it was. As for things that are related to COVID, right now, I put some of this stuff out in the Raider update, but right now, our county numbers are right around 50 per 10,000. That's up from 48 a week ago. District numbers are sticking at about 38.8. Those are up from 34 about a week ago. And the Hastings-specific cases, so this wouldn't include our zip codes of our district that are in Washington County, it would only be in Dakota County, are at 48 right now. They're up from 40 a week ago. Vaccination rates have held right around 57% in the Hastings proper area, and our positivity rate keeps going up. So you would, based on trending, that kind of would be something you'd think might happen. But our vaccination rates really aren't happening or aren't increasing all that much. So if we get more detailed at our building level, as of this afternoon, we have had eight high school students that have had positive tests back, one staff member at the high school. We've had nine middle school students and one staff member. We've had seven elementary students across the three buildings and two staff members, and then two students and a staff member at Tilden. So those are kind of what our counts look like right now. And then I just got a message right before the meeting. One of the things that always takes a long time to get a handle on is the quarantining, and how many students are actually having to quarantine. So right now, we have 37 students that are quarantined, 15 of those are at the middle school and 22 at the high school. So that's kind of where we're at with COVID. So right now, with regard to buildings and programming, our principals and our building staff, while they're focusing on kids, are really digging into those building improvement plans. If you remember, we did a lot of work last year, got into strategic planning, operational plan, did that work with teamwork. Now, the focus really is on the building principals and those teaching teams in figuring out, what does it actually look like in operation? And they're doing that, as well as working through our new teacher growth and development system and evaluation tool. And today, I was at, or this week, at all three elementaries, working, or not working with them, watching them really work with their phonemic awareness in our reading literacy program, which is kind of amazing to watch all the teachers back in action, really digging into what do we need to know in order to best serve our students. So administratively, then, what we're working on with that district plan is really trying to figure out what exactly are the metrics that are going to make the most sense for the areas that we've chosen with those operational planning pieces? And then how do we go about monitoring that? So it all feeds in from the last, from probably three work sessions ago, whereas a board, you're outlining the calendar across 12 months of what do you want to focus on each month. Administratively, we're trying to figure out what's all that baseline data going to be by the end of the year, and what are the metrics. The buildings are working on those building improvement plans, getting all of the actual pieces of those initiatives in place right now. So the system's moving forward really well. You should start seeing, if you haven't already, speaking of that, building staff posting their purpose or why statement. So we did a district-wide revisiting of, with staff, why do we do what we do? So if I'm a teacher, if I'm a para, if I'm a principal, why do we do what we do? And Trent Hanson helped lead each one of our buildings through a process of really getting at, what's my purpose statement, based on what I'm doing this year? And so one thing we did to try and drive that point home is, you'll see staff wearing these little buttons that say, "Ask me why," just as a reminder for them to really focus in on as they move through the days, why am I doing this? What really is the purpose that I have, again, in the position that I have, in the building that I have? So that was a collective conversation that we had during workshop week. That really, really went well. And then, just a couple of things, as I shared in the Raider update, we have spent the majority of our district's ESSER dollars on additional staffing to include things like social workers, additional classroom staff, credit recovery, cannabis health therapists, and support for our EL and special education programs. So I just want to keep sharing that that's what we're doing with those dollars. And enrollment numbers are going to be covered a little bit later, as we move through that report. But once we get our October 1 counts, then we're going to start seeing, or the public will start seeing, the board engaging conversations around what's our enrollment projection look like, what's our budget look like, what does our forecasting look like, and what does that mean for a year from now? So that we're just on the start, the edge of that process starting. And then finally, just so that everyone has a heads-up, the district office will actually be temporarily moving into the middle school, starting next Tuesday. The district office has hit the rotation where there's going to be new carpeting put in there to replace that carpeting that's all bubbling up. There'll be some paint that's done, there'll be some new office cubicles put in there. So kind of, it's hit the docket with all the other building improvements that have happened. So in order for us to keep doing what we need to be doing, the middle school staff has carved out some space in the reading hallway here for the majority of our staff to be in. And then we'll also be taking over the two computer labs that aren't used during the day behind the media center here, in order to house the rest. We'll be in the middle school for the next month. They think that's how long it's going to take, which also means that we will most likely be in the main office during November 2 with that election. So people that need to do absentee balloting, starting next Tuesday, will come to the main office. Becky Garcia actually will be, her new office will be in the main office next to Lindy, so she'll be really easily accessible for all of that. So we've tried to make as best accommodations as we can for accessibility for people. But again, that'll start the next Tuesday and probably go through first week of November. Phone numbers will stay the same. We're able to do that with the phone system we have. So everything is getting set up so that people will still be able to get in touch with who they need to get in touch with. With that, I'd open it to questions, but that's what I have for an update for the month.
I have actually two questions. Thank you for that update. How was the atmosphere in the building since school started?
My interpretation of the atmosphere is the kids are really excited to be back in school. I think the teachers are really excited to be back in school, but I think the teachers are really tired already, because it's, you know, it's still different. It's still different. But everybody, particularly with the three elementary schools today, again, it was exciting to see normal teacher planning, work, conversation, like, how do we do this? That, we haven't really had that for a long time, not just in our district, but in many districts. So it seems to be as good as it can be right now, as we move through this. So I'm pleasantly surprised. I feel like we were in a better spot than some districts. We're on par with other districts, and I think our staff continues to show up and give it all they've got every day for the kids.
Yeah, as a mom of a fifth grader and a third grader, the efforts are definitely showing. My kids come home with smiles every day. My daughter is complaining about school, which is a great sign. I have her back! So it's, yeah, thank you for, you know, to the staff, to the teachers, and everything that they do, that we can, you know, hopefully keep these kids in class. So that's awesome. Second question is, where can I buy one of those buttons? Because I'd like to ask me why. No, it's a good reminder. I really like that. No, that's really cool.
Yeah, we actually, I had them sitting on my desk. I had the buttons here for the board, too, but I forgot them, so I will get them out to you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd just like to echo, I was in an elementary building volunteering today, and it was really nice to just see, it was picture day. And it was, of course, crazy for picture day, but it was good. It felt normal. There was a feeling of normal. It was good.
I have a child in each building, high school, middle school, and elementary, and it's amazing. They're excited, they're actually excited to do homework. They're excited, they're playing sports. I feel like our life is normal again, so I want to thank everybody in this district for what they're doing.
So, we will move on to the Building Construction Fund project update.
I can provide a few updates tonight on the projects that are in process, so those are the ones that we're watching most carefully right now. So the middle school improvement project is coming along. We're still working on some of the commissioning on that one. There's still some open items that need to be resolved, but there is progress. The Pinecrest deferred maintenance project is basically done, and we're just waiting for the closeout documents. The high school athletic field parking lot, again, is done and just waiting for that final pay app. Let's see, the Tilden deferred maintenance and roof, again, is done, and we're just waiting for closeout documents. And then the high school tennis courts, again, that one, we're working through that punch list, and they're putting in some fencing slats, but otherwise, that will be done, too. The other item we talked about last month was the technology improvements project, and we did just receive that funding commitment letter this week. So you'll see that that money is going to kind of get deposited back in there, and it's about $475,000 through E-Rate, so that's great news for the district.
Does anyone have any questions for Jen? As always, thank you for tracking this. It makes it so easy to follow. Just one of the great things you do. Okay, so we'll move on to student enrollment.
Okay, so it is early to be looking at student enrollment, but if we look at September of 2021, we were at 4,165, and September of 2122, we're at 4,086. So there was a decline, and we had anticipated that. We're currently pretty close to what's budgeted, but keeping in mind that we are still waiting for that 15-day drop period, so we anticipate that we'll see on October 1 that number go down. So at this point, I mean, it's good information to have, but it is just really early to use it for anything. It's just early.
And just a reminder question, so if the 1st of October, is that the date that we have to report to the state, right?
That's correct.
So that's, I mean, statewide, it's acknowledged that enrollment numbers in September are very...
Correct. So we're working...
Transitional.
Other districts right now, too. Like, some of our kids might have gone to other districts, some of their kids might have come to our district. So it's just working through all of that paperwork right now, but really, all of that will be done by October 1.
All right, any other questions for Jen? All right. Then we'll move into our action items. First up is the consent agenda. For those of you who want to see everything on here, it is all posted to Board Book, and you can pull up the files. It includes bills payable, personnel reports, etc. So do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. So then we'll move into our items for individual action, beginning with the max levy limitations.
So in Board Book, I did put a summary of where we're currently at with the levy, but tonight, we're really certifying the maximum available, and that's very standard. So it's early on in the levy process, so we'll certify the maximum available, and then there may still be some changes made. So the document that is in Board Book actually changed tonight at about 5 o'clock. We got an email from MDE basically saying that there was some updates through Dakota County that they were making to the tax values, so that changes our overall levy. It really had an impact of about $3,000 out of $17.5 million, but at the same time, once they updated some of those values, there's other values that we'll update in this levy also. So this should give you a good idea of what the amount is, but it is not final. So we'll do the final levy in December.
Okay, are there any questions? All right, so then with that, we can take a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. All right, motion carries. Next up is the facility rental rates with community ed.
Hi, I was here about a year ago at this time and brought this information forward. It's the community use of facilities, including the rules and regulations, and fees associated for outside user groups that use our spaces. Currently, for this to go around, there is no changes except for the dates on the policy.
All right, thank you, Carrie. So are there any questions for Carrie?
My question is not about the policy, it's just about current practice. Are we seeing much facility use?
Right now...
Or requests for facility use?
Yeah, we're low on requests again, but we're starting to see them come through. Mostly, our requests are for outside uses at this point.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That was total curiosity.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion to approve the facility rental rates?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up is the school readiness fund transfer.
I'll start it. So if you remember, well, it's kind of a group project on this one, so this involves, if you remember, a year ago, we did this, a transfer between the general fund, Fund I, and the community ed fund, Fund IV. There, originally under the governor's executive orders where this started, which allowed districts to transfer from one fund to another fund because of the expenses that were happening for COVID. Since then, it's become statutory that for last year and for this year only, so a two-year period of time, you can make this transfer. so a two-year period of time, you can make this transfer, and we can, in a typical year, just for people that are new to school finance, you, you really can't transfer from Fund Four, which is Community Ed, into Fund One, and you can't really make giant transfers like this in a normal situation. But because of the way the legislature is happening, and allowing us to do this, which is for the reason of, in this case, our school readiness, and the fact that we didn't have as many students and families register, so our revenue on the Community Ed side was significantly lower. And so what this resolution is asking, I'll try to, I apologize to the audience, I'm trying to get used to making this larger without causing you to be dizzy. What we are asking is that we do another funded transfer into the Community Ed Fund Four from the General Fund in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, in order to backfill what we feel like is an appropriate amount for that fund for school readiness to do what it needs to do this year. So a long ways, a long-winded way to say, we are requesting that the board approve a second transfer to community education from the General Fund.
Does anyone have any questions for Superintendent McDowell?
I don't have any questions for Superintendent McDowell, but I did see Carrie Gore make a move to come up and speak when this topic rose, so I, I would like to hear any insights that Carrie might be-
She is poised and ready.
Willing and ready to share.
The only other thing that I would add is this is specific to school readiness, which for us is the preschool. And one of the requirements last year that I think would be helpful to know is that we had the guidance come from the state at that point, that we must be in cohorts. So not only did we have the reduction of students, but we had to maintain the level of staffing that we traditionally have because we had to split the students into two groups of cohorts.
Yeah, thanks for that reminder, Carrie. I remember that now.
Okay, so Stephanie, would you start the resolution?
Yep. I, Stephanie Malm, introduce the following- I, Stephanie Malm, introduce the following resolution and move for the adoption of the School Readiness Fund Transfer. Whereas the Board of Education of the Hastings Public Schools recognizes that community education readiness, school readiness programming offered ser, offered services during the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one school year. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes that for fiscal year twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one only, a school district may transfer funds not already assigned or encumbered by staff salary and benefit, or otherwise encumbered by federal law, for any accounts or operating fund for, fund to the undesignedated balance in any other operating fund. A fund transfer is allowed if the transfer meets criteria from Minnesota Law twenty-twenty, Chapter one sixteen, House File four, forty-four fifteen, Article three, Section eight, whereas the Board of Education recognizes the approval of the fund transfer must not interfere with the equitable delivery of distance learning or social distancing models. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes that ISD two hundred preschool program enrollment drops significantly during the twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one school year, and intends to support the school readiness programming and employees for the long-term benefit of the community. Can I get a second motion, please?
Second.
Becky Beisel seconded the motion for adoption of the foregoing resolution. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education intends to fully approve the transfer on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, from the General Fund, Fund zero-one, to the School Readiness Fund, Fund zero-four, to the, in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars as a result of Minnesota Laws twenty-twenty, Chapter one sixteen, House File forty-four fifteen, Article three, Section eight. And we will do a roll call vote. Becky Beisel?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
This is on yes.
Lisa Hadine?
Yes.
Stephanie Malm, yes? Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Scott Gergen is- What is going on here? Scott Gergen is not present. Dave Pembel is not present. Adopted this twenty-second day of September twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. Next up is another resolution, and it's a resolution appointing election judges.
So I'll just preface this by, this is a statutory requirement, that as we are moving into the upcoming election for November second, we have to by resolution, establish who the election judges are and what location they will be at.
Yeah, and I would just like to say thank you to everyone who offers to be an election judge. It's a great service to the community.
Move forward with the resolution. I, Stephanie Malm, introduce the following resolution and move for the adoption of the Appointing Election Judges for the November second, twenty-twenty-one School District General Election. And as it reads, and this will be posted online for everybody to view, can I get a second motion, please?
Second.
Lisa Hadine seconded the motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution. We will do a roll call vote. Becky Beisel?
Yes.
Brian Davis?
Yes.
Lisa Hadine?
Yes.
Stephanie Malm, yes? Kelsey Waits?
Yes.
Scott Gergen not present. Dave Pembel not present. It's still on, okay.
Alright, thank you.
I'm finding out as, as you all press the button, it's, mine's going off.
Yeah, it turns green when it's on, if you haven't noticed. So, last up to approve are the policies that we had the second reading of, Policy one oh two, Policy two thirteen, Policy four thirteen, Policy five twenty-one, Policy five twenty-two, as well as Policy five twenty-two A. So do we have a motion to approve those policies?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Alright, motion carries. That leaves us with just future meeting dates. So, as you look, you'll notice, or for the community, they may notice that we do have an additional work session scheduled for October, and that's because we do have a lot of board work that we will be doing actually in the next couple of months, based on just our plan, as we've been developing it at the work session.
There is a wrong date. October twenty-second, it should be October twentieth. October twenty-second is a Friday.
Alright, thank you, Becky. So, yep. Anyway, all of our committee meetings are also posted online, and just to clarify for the community, those are also open meetings. I know we have gotten some questions about those in the last couple of weeks, so all board meetings are open meetings, unless we have to close for the discussion of negotiations, as we did before.
Just going to remind people that as they're seeing the locations, because of the district office move over the next month, we're having all the meetings happen in this space, and nothing will take place over at the old boardroom.
Is, is that even true for this Friday? The facility?
This Friday will be fine. The, we will start there on the fourth, sorry, the month of October. Because they won't have, on the twenty-eighth, that's when we move out, so we'll still be able to do the meetings in that, that space.
Thank you for clarifying. Any more discussion on this? Otherwise, we can take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any discussion? Alright, meeting adjourned.